Thank you. Have to do it like Peg. Peg has good wording for that. Our first case, 0809, Robert Dermott, 76 Mulligan Road with a minor lot split with variances. Steve, do you want to give us some background of that?
Sure. My name's Steve Pearson, Director Code Enforcement and Zonia Administrator for the City of Athens, and I have been sworn in. You should have been forwarded some information regarding a request for a minor subdivision on Mulligan Road. The applicant is Robert Demott. Packet should have had a vicinity map at Athens Township, Section 8, kind of get you in the neighborhood. And then a little more detail on a drawing actually showing how long and narrow this parcel of land is. It appears it back sometime in the 1980s that Gerald Behey, a professional surveyor, surveyed out about half of this tract. It was owned at the time by Newcomes. You've got that in your packet and a copy of the meets and bounds. Ultimately, that was transferred in 1992 to Mr. Demott. You should have a copy of quick claim deed with two parcels, the one where the house exists now where there is a residence, and then the strip of land. However, it was transferred continuous and contiguous, which is just a language term that's used to combine two parcels as opposed to doing a whole new perimeter survey. Now comes Mr. Demott. He would like to have this split out as a separate lot. The problem being it's eight times deeper than it is in its width, and three to one is the maximum that's permitted. So the proposal then would be to be able to split the existing piece of property. It actually has two different descriptions, two parcel descriptions, but to have those each stand alone and to be recorded separately as individual lots as opposed to two combined tracts. And the request then is just for a variance from Section 210406A4 and from the subdivision regs, which says the maximum depth of any lot shall not be greater than three times its width. And in this case, it's eight to one.
I have a couple of questions. I know it's interesting that one of the maps show that Mulligan Road is part theirs too. Is that what I'm looking at?
There is a section of Mulligan Road adjacent to this property that was part of what I believe was called the Allendale subdivision.
Okay.
And the other parcel fronts on Mulligan Road. However, Mulligan Road, some of those lots were split out of farm lots. It wasn't a platted subdivision. So Mulligan Road is actually platted as a subdivision up to a point, and then property owners own to the middle of the road with highway easements going on up the road.
Okay.
Allendale subdivision, I believe, was the name.
Okay. And I noticed it says somewhere in the literature that it's partially inside the city, outside the city, and the backend, if I understand, is outside the corporation limit, the small little tail.
That's correct. It's probably indicated on one of the drawings. The meets and bounds description actually describes the acreage in and out, in the city and out of the city.
Does this plot map, right?
Yeah. So there's, yeah, on the back, yeah, Mr. Behey's may actually indicate, his survey indicate the acreage in and out. Yes, it does.
Okay.
Point 30 acres in the township, 1.3891 acres in the city.
Okay. Last question I can think of right now is I went up there and looked. It looks like the lot split would entail anybody building on that lot going outside than the new lot, I guess, without the house would require variance because it drops off real quick. Is it a buildable lot, I guess is the question? I know you can build on anything.
Those soils in that area have, do have some challenges as far as concerned slip potential. So there would have to be some kind of engineering or architectural design consideration if a building was proposed there.
And it's up for sale right now.
Yeah, that's, as everyone knows too, if you're looking at a vacant lot as a free service, you can go to Athens Soil and Water Conservation District. Kevin Lewis, who's, who works there, will come out to your site, actually make an appraisal. You know, is there really a buildable site here? If so, are there some special considerations? So there are, as you said, every lot can be built on, but it could be at a price. Not every lot's just, you know, flat, easily buildable. So yes, there are some challenges there for construction.
Any other questions for Mr. Pearson? Okay. Would you like to come up then?
Yeah, I'm personally talking about.
I know. Can you come?
I did get the soil.
Come to the.
Come to the, so we can hear you. Or you can sit at the table if.
No, doesn't matter. I don't know.
And then state, state your name.
But.
Can you state your name, please?
Yes, I'm Bob Demott.
Okay.
And I do have the, this just came yesterday, so I guess maybe you might like to have copies. I don't know. It's the soil report from Kevin Lewis.
Okay, great.
And also, there's a little section of a map there that indicates where the building lot is.
Okay, thanks.
And the end result, I think, is that it's, it is, it is buildable with care. And I also have a, I also have a photograph of one section of the lot. This is what you were looking at yesterday from Mulligan Road. I don't know if I want that or not, or I'll leave it there if you need it. And I think there's, oh, there's about 65 feet setback from, let's see, Mulligan, the middle of Mulligan Road would be here, and it's about 65 feet to my perennial garden. And then, I don't know, another 30 or so beyond that, so.
Before it drops off?
Before it drops off.
Yeah. Okay. Do you want to see?
And the other thing, I guess I would ask you to look at is the little map that goes with, I don't know if I have it here, sure, with the survey. And I think what it indicates is that all of, there are four lots. Yeah, it's, it's this one. I don't know if you have this, call it, that's Section 2 on the top. There are four lots exactly together. The third one is the one that I have a house on. The fourth one is the one I'd like to sell. And the two to the left of these are, one was Bob Cooley's house, if you remember him, and Sam Jasper. And my argument here, I guess, is that all of these lots are similarly deeper by more than three to one than, they're all about eight to one as mine is. So I guess what I'm asking for is to be able to.
Go through the mic, please.
Do I have to go over here?
Yeah, there's probably people watching on TV who can't hear.
Okay. So what I'm suggesting is I'd like to, whatever, I don't know what the right word is, but to come into compliance with the other, you know, with the shape of all those, all those other lots. There's already, my argument, I guess, would be that there's already a precedent there for the lots being deeper than they are allowed to be as opposed to the width. So as Mr. Pearson said, it was, it's more like eight to one than three to one, but there's also four, three other lots that have already been built on, almost, the houses would be almost in relationship exactly to where a house would go on this, on this other lot as well. So I think it would be fairly uniform in terms of its appearance.
Other questions? Have you talked to the Health Department about potential septic for this site? Interesting.
There's sewer there and water.
There is sewer.
Yes, uh-huh, yep, yep.
Is this Curtis? Got this one.
Questions?
And I think there's enough width on Mulligan Road. I think it's a little over 90 feet width in that front section to, I think, allow for a driveway and that kind of, that kind of thing.
Are there other people who would like to address this question, any issue in the audience? Okay. Have any last words?
No, I think that's, I think that's, that's it. Try to present the facts, anyway.
So what I think is before us is okaying or not okaying the minor lot split with the variance because it's skinnier than.
The three to one ratio.
The three to one ratio under code. So is there a discussion among council members, department commission members?
Well, I did go up there, as I said, and it's hard to always get a good feel for how far the distances are in terms of setbacks. To make it work, you probably have, you probably have the room for the 25 feet from the road, I suspect, considering if it's just an easement, you may even have to get closer. I was a little bit concerned about the line of sight for that particular lot as well, just because it comes over a little bit of a hump there and then goes down. I don't know if you know Mulligan well. But as Demott pointed out, there are similar lots on both downhill from it. And it's not really a size issue, just a shape issue.
Have you talked to neighbors? Have you heard any concerns about driveway or?
No, none at all. Actually, I have to explain. I am selling my house. I had a house on 76 Mulligan Road, and I was selling it originally with all the acreage together. And then, you know, as the housing market has gotten so bad, I ended up, Liz Mall is my realtor, and I ended up deciding that I would do a smaller package with the house and keep the other one aside, just to lower the price of the house. And as it turned out, we did, we do have a buyer, and the house is under contract, and they know full well, in fact, I offered them the other lot if they wanted. They don't want it, and they're not interested in, in having it. They said if someone builds on it, they would put a privacy fence up on the border between the two, so they, they seem to be fine with it. And there's no one else actually who could see that except Gary Hunter is a catty corner from me, and I told him what I was doing, and he seemed, he seemed fine with it. So that's, and the houses, as you're looking at my house, the houses to my left can't see it. And there's no one else across the street and down that can see it either. So it's, it's fairly self-contained in that regard, yeah.
Okay. Any other comments? Do we have a motion?
I move that we accept a lot split with the variance.
Second.
With the rate, wait, with the depth, the sheer variance.
The depth, the depth, the width, variance. Do you have a second?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Is that?
Say no.
No. Okay. And you, I didn't hear you. Aye. So three to one?
Three to one.
So it passes?
Okay. What's the next step?
What's the next step, Steve?
Your recommendation of recording to the Planning and Development Committee of City Council, and the Council ultimately grants the variance via an ordinance.
And that's, that's Debbie Phillips' group, her, she's the head of that committee.
Who is it now?
Debbie Phillips is the councilperson who's the head of that committee. So you may want to get in contact with her.
So they will be having a meeting then at some point?
It will come up in one of their committee meetings, so.
All right. Well, thank you very much for your time. I appreciate it very much.
Okay.
Steve, thank you.
Okay, that was the cases for today. Next, we move on to communications. We have a resolution from Council, our 0508. However, when Peg Cohn called me yesterday and said that the, the people, the development project that it was regarding asked her to put it on the back burner because they did not have, one of the people could not show up to it. Is that right?
That's right.
Right. So we, we are more than happy to do that. So, so we will schedule it for probably the next meeting, which is in two weeks. Is that? Okay. So, so if you're here for that, sorry. Okay, we have a letter from the Health Department regarding the Conkle lot split, which was sent to the Planning Commission members here. Okay. This is something that we did ask in order to look at the lot split for the Conkles. And so basically, it says that there is enough space for the various parts of the septic system that one would need. So that, I think, that was one of the major concerns, I think, one of the major concerns that's coming up almost on every lot split and such, is whether there's enough space and the right type of soils for sewage disposal and potential, when that sewage disposal system breaks down, for an alternative one. So, what do we do this? We have to accept it? So should we?
Basically, he's also identifying that there are still several outstanding issues that have to be resolved before they appear before us again.
Right. Well, I think that what we need to do is put the lot split back up into the cases, and it would come up next.
Next meeting.
Next meeting. Because right now, it's not under the case section of our meeting, it's under Communications. So maybe that's what we want to do.
Okay.
Okay. So.
So it goes on next, 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 Jen, next month, next two weeks from now, Jen.
But again, I wanted to point out that one of the reasons that he wanted this to be discussed under Communication is that there are outstanding issues that still need to resolve, and I'm not clear as to whether or not that will be done in two weeks.
Okay. Well, solid, oh, these were the issues concerning the scrap tires. You, you received the letter, everybody, the Conkles, right? The scrap tire, mosquito nuisance, sewage nuisances, improperly abandoned septic tanks, and unpermitted sewage disposal systems. So what, I think that before anything goes forward with this, the Health Department is that he's saying that any, before any approval of any septic design or anything, these nuisances have to be cleaned and taken care of properly. I would, I would underscore that. I think that that's probably, before adding to any potential nuisances with development and, and stuff, I think that's a good, a good way to start with a new lot.
Okay.
So how do we want to go about this?
Well, we could hold off until.
We have verification that these have been taken care of. Okay. So maybe that's what we should do. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay. Do we need a motion to do that, or?
I don't know, do we?
Under Communication, I didn't feel that we did.
No.
Okay. Maybe it would be, the, the smart thing to do would be hold off until these nuisances are taken care of. When the property is ready to come up for a lot split, then bring, let us, communicate with us, let us know, and we will put it back under Cases. So I think that's the way to go.
Do I have to assume that we're going to hear from Chuck Hammer as well, or that it's been done?
He's probably the one who's going to have to go out and make sure that it's done.
Sign off on it?
So pending communication with Chuck Hammer, that they have been done, we will hold off on this case. Okay? Okay. So those are our communications. Any questions or concerns with that, with the Conkle?
Lot split.
Lot split, okay. Announcements and other businesses? The next meeting will be May 15th, this time, 12 o'clock. Steve?
I do have a correspondence.
Okay.
Information that I received late, I want to get the decision.
Okay.
No decision necessary today.
Okay.
Thank you. Thanks.
Again, my name is Steve Pearson. I'm the Director of Code Enforcement for the City of Athens. In this packet of information, what it pertains to is a facility owned by Appalachian People's Action Coalition, APAC. They're like a reuse, recycle type business on Route 682, just above the plains on the way to, on the way to Chancy. So the first page that you have there is just kind of a vicinity map to get you in the neighborhood. The second page is a parcel of land that was surveyed, actually, I believe, quite a few years ago, 1996, but recently checked for math accuracy just a few days ago to divide out a separate lot from that that is there now. On this drawing, you can see a couple, a couple parcels that are there, including a larger one. One lot is actually in a subdivision called Tyler Town. That's one portion of the proposed lot. Also in the packet, you should have the surveyor's meets and bounds description and for the proposed parcel, and also the deed for the existing parcel, which calls out meets and bounds out to State Route 33. And it does say that includes Lot 19, it's Tyler Town, which is .2 acres. In this particular situation, just as always for minor subdivision, there are five criteria that have to be met, and the big one nowadays is sewage disposal. The parcel proposed to be split has a building on it right now. It looks like it was probably constructed as a home, now being used as a business office. So there are two different ways then to get approval for different types of uses. The City-County Health Department signs off on one, two, and three family homes, and everything else is done by the EPA. Now, there is an existing sewage disposal system there that appears to be functioning for the house. I did speak to Mr. Hammer, and he has no authority to sign off on it if the proposal is for the building to be used for commercial purposes. That actually then throws in another little twist, and that is to subdivide, you have this, this chart from subdivision regs in your packet. In order to subdivide a parcel with public water but not sewer or curb and gutter, for residential purposes, there's a one acre minimum lot area, and this proposal is for less than that. However, if you look down at the second section, if it's considered a commercial property, you'll need 20,000 square feet, and then no variance would be necessary. So in the one case, a variance is necessary, it's considered residential, but the proposal is actually to use the building for commercial purposes.
And using commercial?
And then, then we're kind of in the.
The EPA realm.
Right.
Okay.
This is not common at all, and Chuck Hammer and I did discuss it, and Chuck was going to call the EPA to see how in the future we might want to handle, handle such things. So that's kind of, and actually, this is all leading to a proposition to split this parcel off so the house is contained on a separate lot and be used for a separate purpose, deeded separately, sold separately, leveraged separately, mortgaged separately. And then the actual APAC facility would be on its own parcel. So, and there are representatives here today too that can answer any questions you might have.
Okay. Would you like to come up and?
My name is Jerry Hartley. I'm the job coach coordinator at APAC. We got into a unique situation where APAC needed a little money to operate, and we had this piece of property that we're paying taxes on. It has a legal description for taxes, but not a legal description to where we could get a loan. We, we had rented the house, and low and behold, it took two, 40 cubic yard dumpsters to clean the house out. So we, APAC, the board, decided not to rent the house anymore, but to use it for offices with just two of us in the office. The bank, the bank loan's been approved and everything, but we need a legal description of the property. Is there any questions?
I'm trying to get a feel for the, basically, we have two pictures. We have a GIS picture right here, and we have another survey on the backend of it. So what portion is being actually split? And again, this is actually, we're in slimmer area, this is not a real case, I guess, I guess the thing.
This part.
Oh, that's just that part, the one with the lines in it, right?
Yes.
I see.
And your proposal is to build a commercial entity on the.
It's already there. We're not building anything. The house is already there. We're starting to refurbish it as offices. I have a map of the Tyler Town showing the exact location and everything of the lot that we're splitting off.
Okay.
Would you like to see it?
Yeah.
And make sure that goes in the packet that goes out.
Next time.
Next time.
Okay. So what happens to the remainder of the property?
It stays the same.
Okay. And it's, what's on the remainder of the property?
Our business.
Okay, your business, okay.
Yes, I think where they used to sell their furniture.
Okay, that's where it is. And this is what they're splitting off right here.
I think so. I think that's.
Yeah.
Okay. So the process would be that we're going to assign a case number to this? Have they, have they applied? Is this their application? Or are they preliminary? What do they need to do, Steve?
I have received a formal application.
Okay. Okay. When you give a formal application to Steve, we will assign a case number to it, and it will come up probably in the next meeting. Depends on how quickly you get your application in. We have to get the paperwork to the commission members a week ahead of time before putting it on the agenda, so.
Christine?
Mm-hmm.
Is the case, is this question still rising, whether the EPA looks at it, or whether the Health Department looks at it, or does EPA now have to look at it because it's commercial? Is that what you're saying?
The way, the way I read it, the board has a right, the board can approve it without it going to the EPA. Am I not right, Mr. Pearson?
Oh, I think what, what, most of what's been going on with lot splits is that we would really like to know about the septic before we do any.
Okay.
You know, so I would, I would look at deciding whether it needs to go through the, through the EPA. I mean, when Steve talks to, to Chuck, and we, you guys figure out what's the most, the most user-friendly way of dealing with this? I mean, the people at EPA are also some, you know, they're user-friendly. They're, they're not local, though. Their office is in Logan. So when that figured out, and you talk to them, and then let Steve know, and then we can assign a case. Because in that way, when it, instead of us saying with a case number on it, saying, you need to go and talk to the EPA, it's better if you just give us a whole package.
Okay.
And it sounds like, if I understand correctly from what Steve Pearson was saying, is that the Chuck Hammer's looked at this already, and it's a working septic system?
It's a working septic system, yes. It's a aerator system.
Okay.
The house is separate from, we have septic system for the business also.
Okay. The reason why I'm asking is because technically, we're, we've got two different uses here, and there's no zoning in this outside the city limits, so.
Yeah.
Just, okay, in theory, if we say, okay, we sign off it and say it's great for commercial, and then turns around, turns into, you know, residential again, does it, does it fit both descriptions, I guess is my concern?
Yes.
In other words, will it work for both uses? Okay. Just asking.
Thank you very much.
Okay.
Here's. Okay.
As I explained, the difference between residential and commercial has a difference in lot size. So if it's being considered commercial, then if the EPA, after discussion with Mr. Hammer, determines that the sewage disposal system is fine, no variance will be necessary. and no need to come back to the commission. It's an approvable minor lot split, which I'd normally process those and forward those up to either the mayor or the Service Safety Director. So you're not necessarily hearing every case related to lots, but it's just the ones that have problems or need variances.
Okay.
And this one just had a little twitch to it. For minor subdivision, as I mentioned, there are five criteria for approval without variance or additional review. And four, number four, again, it says the proposed subdivision is approved by the Athens City County Health Department. That would be the case for one, two, and three family dwellings, or the Ohio Environmental Protection Agency, or other special sanitary district, which would be for commercial, industrial-type application. And I think, as the mayor mentioned, it's really hard to tell, is it residential or commercial, when you're outside the city, because you can, you know, you might have a residence next door one day, and then it's a business the next day. So I will work with Mr. Hammer and the EPA then.
Great. So we look forward to not hear this, because that means it will have gone through.
What's that?
If we don't hear from you, we'll assume that the EPA said a-okay.
Yes.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Any more communications or anything, Steve? Okay. Opportunity for citizens to speak about items not covered on the agenda?
Yes, not.
Okay. Disposition of minutes.
I noticed on page two, oh, let's see, I don't know how far it's down, probably about the bottom third there, it says, Mr. Hammer said this lot, that the lot has, have rooms, has room for initial leach bed and initial air in case this fails. I think it should be a secondary area, maybe?
Okay.
Initial and initial, maybe?
Right, because it's asked right before that if it fails.
Yeah, okay. And that's the only thing that jumped out at me, Ted, chief.
I would ask that in case number 0808, Mark Spazza Holder docs, out the third line, I want to clarify that the, the proposed lot survey was mathematically approved by the county engineer, my point at that time.
Also, I note that the lot split we just did earlier today was 808, and this is 808, so I'm not sure which case is which.
No, this one's 809.
That's 809?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, I see.
Okay.
Okay, it's my mistake.
Okay. So, any other, anything else for the minutes?
No, I mean, we accept them.
Okay, we have a move. Does anybody second it?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Proving minutes?
Aye.
Minutes approved? Okey-dokey.
You have to sign it, or?
Oh, I do.
It's a final, I guess.
Okay, I'll sign it. Okay, it gets a second. So, okay, well, I call this meeting adjourned on my next meeting.
Okay, adjourned. Fifteenth.
I'll be back.